Okay, so this is the November 9th Berlin Massachusetts zoning board of appeals meeting. If you are connected, your video image or contact information may be recorded as part of the official record of this meeting. This is recorded. Our normal chair is not here, Lynn Ryan. We do have four members, so we can at least initiate the meeting. We have a couple of folks in attendance. I'm the. Our initial agenda is to start with the 10 Bigelow Road Cannabis Cultivation Facility. But we'll hold off and see if we can wait for Linda's get here while that, in the meantime, can move on to the next agenda item of approving past meeting minutes. Has everyone read the previous minutes?
Minutes of October 12. Yes, I did.
I have.
Okay, does anybody have a motion on this?
I moved to accept the meeting minutes of October 12.
I was second.
Okay, so we have a move, a motion by Dennis and a second by Jenny to accept the meeting minutes. We'll do a quick roll call vote. Ginny.
I.
Keith.
I.
Dennis.
I.
And I'm an I. It's four votes to accept. Do we have any additional communications received?
The only communication that I received was from the Board of Selectmen saying that Pat Jackson was reappointed to the Board on November 1st.
Way to go, Pat.
Okay, and it's, I recall that should be for five years, so. Pat should be with us for a long time.
Hopefully, yes.
Excellent. At this point, I don't have any other items on the agenda. If there's anyone in the attendees that have anything and they wish to raise their hand that they wish to bring before the Board, we can certainly entertain those. While we're waiting.
I'm not seeing any hands go up.
Okay. The only thing. Well, our next meeting is, should be scheduled for December 14th at 7:00 PM. As far as I know, we have nothing on that agenda thus far.
Correct. Danny, do you have any warrants that you need to report?
I haven't received any bills or any, anything that needs spend money on.
All right, I will let you know, however, that in the bin above the mailboxes is reconciliations from the accounting department for you to pick up and.
Fine, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, and just for our audience members that aren't part of the Board, we are holding off here as long as we can to attempt to get Lynn Ryan logged in. Board members, Keith Susie was not present for the previous hearings on 10 Bigelow Road, so we don't have a forum to open that hearing. So if Lynn can't get in here, we'll just have to unfortunately bypass that for this month.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna call her and see if I can help her. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Yep.
Call her house down the Cape.
Gotcha.
Do you have that number?
Yep.
Leanne, do we have anything else in the pipeline that you're aware of?
Um, the only thing I'm aware of is the one we discussed last month with Mr. Santos for that vacant lot on Old Central Street. Where the Board voted to not accept his application because it was incomplete. So he has been in to ask me and the building inspector additional questions and find out, you know, what, what he needs to do further. So I think the deadline for December hearing is next week, so that's the only thing I'm aware of.
Okay.
Yeah, next one, he would have to, he would have to apply by next Wednesday in order to have a December hearing, so I think that's his intent, but his site plan needed a lot of work and I don't know if he had enough time to get all that done for next month.
Excuse me for a second, Leanne, can you text me her Cape number? I thought I had it, but both rang through. I just want to make sure I have the right one.
Okay, yeah, hang on. Keith, it's the 540 number.
Okay, I thought that was her cell. I'm calling that now.
We just lost Danny.
Yeah.
Oh, boy, I guess this is when doing it virtually, it's not the best.
Okay, she's, she's gonna call in instead of futzing with the software, but yeah, it's the same problem that Danny had. And Danny is no longer with us, it looks like.
Right, we lost Danny.
He's back.
Here he is.
Whoa.
Hey, welcome back.
Welcome back, Dennis.
Hi, I don't see you on any, my, see me on the screen.
We see you on the screen.
Okay.
We can hear you. Lynn's gonna, Lynn had the same problem that you had, so she's calling in now too. Hopefully. That was the plan. You were up late last night counting those ballots, yawning.
Apparently, technology will be the bane of our existence.
I know, Lynn's pretty good. I wonder why calls not working. Danny, you got it going, nice job.
Boy. Fun and games.
Okay, here comes Lynn by phone. Lynn?
You have to unmute your phone, Lynn. Still can't hear you.
Hi.
There you are.
You have no idea. So is everybody here?
Okay, let me get to caught up. We have done pretty much everything with the exception of the 10 Bigelow Road item. We did not have a forum for that hearing. With you now here, we do, we have four people that can vote on that. And we can pick up with that if you'd like.
That sounds good.
Okay, the petitioner is in attendance. I'll promote him to keep the panel.
Okay.
And it is 7:28, Lynn, if you want to, or Jim, wanna open the hearing?
Okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
All right, so this is a continuation of the hearing on 10 Bigelow Road for a cannabis cultivating and manufacturing facility. They had applied for a special site plan approval and special permit. And we have Wayne Bellick with us as representing the applicant. What do you have tonight for us, Mr. Beck?
Evening, folks, Madam Chair, members of the ZBA. Thanks for having us. I am applying solo tonight due to a prior family commitment, Kathy Adams from Kane Industrial Trust. So, Madam Chair, it's great to see that you're able to join us. I can appreciate your frustrations with some of this technology and a couple of the board members had issues tonight as well. So again, thanks for having us. I was made aware that the applicant had requested, respectfully requested a withdrawal of the application without prejudice of the special permit site plan approval. I don't have a copy of that request. I understand they issued that in writing to the Board. So I'm here tonight at the, the request of, of the Chair to to be here, I guess, to answer any questions that you may have. I'm somewhat limited as to what I can respond to, if this specific as to why they requested the withdrawal. I know a little bit of information, but not a whole heck of a lot, so I can offer whatever you folks, whatever I know. Thank you.
Okay, why don't you, I'm sorry to interrupt him, but why don't you go ahead and explain why they're withdrawing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So my understanding is that the, the proponent has decided to go for similar permitting out in the state of Illinois. My understanding is that, and it's, again, it's limited, she hadn't shared too much with me as to the reasons. But my understanding is that I think it was because of the Cannabis Control Commission in that, that process and some of the delays in the process that they've decided to move on. That's basically all I know. And again, I think if Kathy was here, she would be better able to get into a little bit more detail. As, as, as part of that, that withdrawal of that application, we would respectfully request that the Board keep the two variances for petitions in play as we would be looking as instructed by Kathy to file a new application for site plan approval for an R and D facility, which will still require the variants requested as part of the previous application. And in addition to that. I don't know if you folks hear that. Okay. And, and as part of that, we would also submit a, in addition to that, site plan approval application and all the necessary paperwork, we would also look to submit an additional petition variance to the number of parking spaces required for an R and D facility.
Okay, if I may, are you looking to change the existing request, or are you saying you're gonna submit a new one?
So through the Chair, in addition to the two that are currently before you, the two petitions, this would be a third petition.
Lynn, you can. We can't hear you, Lynn. You can unmute, or you were logging in. Looks like you're trying to log into the computer still.
Oh, yeah, let me see if I can move her to the panel. Jim, while we're waiting, I did just look up the letter that we received and the, the request was only to withdraw the special permit application, so it says nothing about site plan or variances. It's just states that they were withdrawing the request for a special permit.
Okay.
Okay. If we can get Lynn to unmute. We don't see you, Lynn, but I think you probably, we probably can hear you. There she is.
There she is.
Oh, there's the top of my head anyway. Let me just shut the phone off here.
Excuse me.
Okay, I'm awful sorry, guys. It's been one heck of a day. Mr. Bellick.
Yes.
She just wants to remove the special permit, correct?
If that's what the letter says. Again, I don't have a copy of that letter.
It does, it doesn't say that.
Well, the look, the letter says it's referencing a special permit application. And it's.
Yeah, I had replied to her saying that she needed to be here, which may be why. And she told me she may be seeking another tenant of a different kind. What I need to tell you is, if you wanna continue with this, okay, with the application for the site plan and variance for the parking, we need to know the nature. And the nature is gonna determine the number of parking spaces you need. There is no cap, it's in 811 of our bylaw. And there is a chart of the table of parking regulations. Do you have a copy of the bylaw there?
I, I am familiar with that, Madam Chair. I did look at it and I did see the parking density required. They're looking at a research and development facility. And there's some.
I spoke with the building commissioner and it is his feeling right now that it would fall under the category of all of the non-residential establishments except agriculture, which is the last of the categories. And let me just read that for everybody's edification. These, this refers to the number of parking spaces needed as determined by the Board of Appeals based on the projected parking requirements of the initial use, but not less than one parking space for every 200 square feet of gross floor area. Now, you're talking about a 92,000 square foot building, are you not?
That's correct.
If you do the math, if you divide 92,000 by 200, what do you get?
I'm doing that right now, Madam Chair. 463 spaces.
And right now you have what, 170 to 192?
We have, I believe, 132 spaces.
And how would you go about doubling that?
So in looking at that, I'm glad you asked the question. We are looking at, right now, we're looking at, in order to achieve that, it would require going to the other side of the wetland, which we are looking to avoid due to the impacts to the limits of clearing and the earthwork associated with that other side. The access drive out to the wellsite is currently proposed as a gravel access drive 12 foot wide. That would be required to be expanded to a 24 foot wide paved access drive. So the balance of the parking spaces would occur on the other side of the, the wetland. That's what we would be targeting. Ideally, as part of the relief from the Board, what we discussed with Kathy is, in order to continue to preserve that, what we would like for the Board's consideration is that we move forward with 132 spaces, request the variance to the number of parking spaces and set aside the area on the other side of the wetland as reserved spaces. So that area does remain green. If, in the event, the tenant, whoever that may be in the end, determines that they need additional parking spaces, we would respectfully request that the Board include in the decision a condition stating that if they need to increase the number of parking spaces, they come back to the Board for modification to the site plan to build out that side, to, to design that and build it out.
The site plan is use-specific.
Yes.
So we need to know what the use is in order to be able to approve a site plan.
Understood, and this would be the research and development years.
And what type of research and development is it? Do they have cages with animals in them? Do they have laboratories?
Yes, that's a good. Yes, Madam Chair, I'm not exactly sure what they're looking at, but I could ask, I could ask Kathy what they're looking at.
Okay, I have a couple of suggestions for you.
Just thank you.
Quite frankly, I've talked to our liaison on the planning board and that one parking space for 200 square feet is a little bit beyond what you probably would need. But what I'd like you to do is go and meet with the planning board. They'd be glad to receive you and talk to you about perhaps making some changes to that parking. Our hands are tied. Bylaw says that we need to do one parking space for every 200 square feet. If it's listed as R and D, which at this time is what you're telling us it is. My other suggestion would be that she might wanna withdraw without prejudice the variance and the site plan so that she could come back. If, if it's not without prejudice, it would be two years. If it's, if we, if it's the Board's feeling that it should be without prejudice, you can come back at any point in time and refile. It appears that you're gonna have to refile the site plan anyway.
Correct.
Okay, so I mean, I don't know what you wanna do, but those are the options. I mean, we can continue this hearing. I, I just don't know if that's gonna be in your best interest. And I don't know if you wanna speak for Ms. Adams or not. But I think it's gonna take some major revamping. You, it would give you an opportunity to, and again, I've opened the door already to the planning board for you to talk to them. And I did speak with the building commissioner just to make sure that I wasn't out there like Pluto when I'm looking at all other non-residential uses. So I guess it's up to you what you wanna do.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I wanna thank you for those extra efforts. You didn't have to do that. You did it and much appreciated. I think those are the great suggestions to go before the planning board. So as I, when I spoke with Kathy initially, when she was saying she was looking to withdraw without prejudice, I indicated to her that she would have to withdraw the special permit and the site plan application, reason being, for the exact reason you had stated, it is a different use. First of all, the plans currently reference cannabis. They also, so that would need to be revised for the new use. Secondly, what I wanted to show on the site plans, I needed to update the parking summary table so that it would reflect the new parking density and ideally a, a reserve parking area. In addition to that, I see two additional sheets coming with this. One showing the layout of a buy right type of parking plan to demonstrate the impacts on the other side for the justifying relief to the requirements. And then, secondly, providing as part of the plan set, the reserve spaces on the other side that would be agreeable to the town of Berlin. So again, we would look to respectfully request that the withdrawing without prejudice for both the, the site plan and the special permit.
And the variance.
With respect to the variance, we, so as we see the variance regardless, Madam Chair, as to how we cut this, we're still going to need relief to those two variant, with those two variances, as parking would still be located in the front of the building and within that yard setback.
I think if you've been with us all along, Mr. Bell, we can't do a variance for parking in front of a building that we don't have a site plan for.
Understood, understood. And I guess respectfully, Madam Chair, it would be that you wouldn't act on it, but if you would like us to withdraw the variance as well.
I'm not asked, I'm not asking you to withdraw. We can act on it. What I'm suggesting is, it may be in your best interest because I don't think this Board, and we've talked about this before, can do a variance for parking units in front of a building of which we have no Of which we have no site plan.
Right. Okay, so just for clarification, it would be in our best interest. If you could clarify that, Madam Chair, it would be, what would be in our best interest?
Well, I would think that if we aren't able to. And we, we went through this for about two months, I think. Explaining that without a site plan. We can't approve parking spaces in front of a building that we don't have reference to.
Correct, so my, yeah, it does. And I guess my thought on that was. You wouldn't be acting on, and I say this respectfully, that you wouldn't be acting on the variances. And would it be just as simple as continuing the public hearings on the variances? To, to a date where you can act on it when you have the new site plans before you.
If I may.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Any continues that we would do is going to have to be, we would have to have a deadline here. We can't. We can't say, well, we'll pick this up again in eight months and, and go from there. If we don't foresee a fairly short term. You know, if you said, if you said you're going to have a new site plan revision for next month, then we, you know, okay, we do it next month, but. You're, you're looking for an open date here. And the risk here is that without a site plan. My view is that there's a pretty good chance that this board would disapprove any variance. And then you're, you then have a rejected request, which you wouldn't be able to, I believe you wouldn't be able to resubmit for two years.
That's correct, that's correct. So I guess, and I appreciate the comment, I agree, and I hope I didn't imply that it was open ended. My day, my idea would be to a date certain. Ideally, I'd like to say to next month, perhaps if the board would consider. Until the following month. And if I can get an application before you folks. Prior to then, for next month's agenda, that way it would still fall within that timeframe.
But what you don't seem to appreciate is. And I think what Jim is also saying is. Are you going to have a site plan ready for next month? And the nature of the tenancy on that property?
I could possibly have the site plan ready by next month. But my fear is if I say yes now, and for some reason I cannot, then I just, I've just left myself wide open for an upper cut. So, and I say that again respectfully. So this is why I am saying that if we continued until January. It leaves some protection so that in the event. That I can submit by next month uncovered. If I submit in, in, in time for a January agenda, then once again, I am covered.
Let me just reiterate, you're saying you want to. On behalf of your client, withdraw. The special permit. Without prejudice, withdraw the site plan without prejudice. Excuse me, I am coming down with something. But go ahead with the variance. And what Jim is trying to tell you, and what I'm trying to tell you is. I have, we have discussed in the past, without a site plan. We cannot justify giving you a variance for parking spaces in front of the building.
I understand that, Madam Chair. So I guess.
One of the things we have to show under 48, Section 10, that's state law. Are you familiar with?
I am quite familiar with that, Madam Chair.
You know, one of the things that we have to show in order to give a variance. Is that you have no place else to put those parking spaces.
Understood.
If you're going to create. A potential lot on the other side of the wetlands. Then how do we do that?
Understood. I understand what, I understand what you're saying, and when you referenced that at a previous hearing, I understood that as well. So I guess. At this point, in order to satisfy that requirement. What I'm hearing is that the variance petitions currently before the board. Cannot be before the board without a site plan application. Before the board currently. Is that correct?
I'm, let me just reiterate what I'm saying. Yes, we need a site plan in order to justify. Allowing. Parking in front of the building. Number one. Number two, if the plan you're going to present offers additional future potential parking. Then I'm not sure that the board, and again, I'm one of the members, okay? There's going to be five people voting on it, hopefully. But we, we can't justify, we can't meet the requirements of 48, Section 10. Saying, we're letting you do this because there's nothing else you can do.
Understood.
You just, do you disagree with my interpretation of 48, Section 10?
I don't disagree with your interpretation. And if I understand you correctly. You're saying that with respect to that, if we show parking on the other side. Of the wetland demonstrates that we would be able to. Provide parking in that area. The concern I have is the number of spacing, spaces, which is what I'm looking for a link on.
Well, this is why I'm saying there's a whole bunch of things in. Involved here. Number one, you need to go back and talk to the building commissioner, as I did this morning. And tell him your intent to use the building for research and development. And ask him what his interpretation. Of the zoning bylaw is as to the number of parking spaces that you would need for a 92,000 square foot building. Number two, if you, we, whatever is required of you for parking. Has to be on. The plan. And. In order for us under 40, Chapter 48, Section 10. You have to have no other means of meeting that parking requirement. In order for us to allow parking in the front of the building. After you meet with the building commissioner and you. He defines for you what he thinks is going on because he is the one who makes that decision, not us. I suggest you go to the planning board. And tell them that you feel that it is. Maybe unjustified or whatever, and see what they have to say and see whatever suggestions they might have. But what I'm telling you is I do not know. How you would be ready for even January.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question? I'm not voting on this.
Sure.
I'm just curious. So what's the downside for him to withdraw without prejudice for the variance? Is there additional fees to file again, or is there a bigger delay to file?
He would have to, I would assume, repay the fees for the filing, but he would be, when he files, like. If you know you're going to be ready for January, you can file in December.
It sounds like he's hopeful, he just doesn't know that he's going to be ready, but he's hopeful that he's going to be ready. So he's trying to avoid those fees. And the additional red tape process to get there. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correct, Mr. Bell?
Absolutely correct.
Okay.
But if in addition to. A variance for. The parking in front of the building, he wants another variance. He'd have to repost it anyway.
Let's see.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. So in terms of, so it would seem that we would have to, would it be reposting, or would it be purely. Posting of the new variance because the two other variances are already posted, are already.
Well, I only know of one variance, and that is, or in the front of the building.
Yeah, so there are actually two. One for in front of the building. The other one was, as the building commissioner said at one of the meetings. Was that the second variance was questionable as to whether or not you needed it because of the wording of the zoning bylaw. However, he suggested to us or directed us to still prepare a petition for that variance for parking within the yard setback. The side yard setback, just in the event that it was needed. He said, just as, you know, a belt and suspenders type of thing. So this would be the third variance independent of those. So it would be a separate petition. I don't know if that.
Well, I think you need to talk to the building commissioner, and I think you need to talk to the planning board. I think there, and this is a personal feeling, not a feeling of the board. That there is affinity for what. Kathy Adams is trying to do here as far as utilizing that land. I don't. I think as far as a cannabis location, it was probably one of the best in the town. I think for other industrial type uses, it makes a lot of sense. Again, my personal feeling, but. I tend to think that that is the feeling of the town. We are not looking to make like difficult. We are trying to find a solution to the problem. I think you're going to need to talk to the building commissioner. As far as a site plan. I, I mean, unless some of my colleagues pipe up and disagree with me. We need to know what the building is going to be used for. If you're going to just build a building and then fill it afterwards. We can't do that because we've got to compute the parking.
I think he understands that. He's just asking more time so he can come back with that information. You know, he's not asking for the board to vote on that variance now. He's looking to extend it. Not indefinitely to January to see if he can get some of these answers.
The site plan will be. Altogether different and will need to be reposted again if the use is not for cannabis.
Understood.
Okay, so he's. So he's really not saving anything anyways, is what you're saying. He's going to have to start, go through the process anyways.
I, well, you know, as far as reposting it, it's a different use. It may well be a different configuration. And it will have to be reposted. There may or may not, I mean, I don't know how he'll make out with the planning board and the building commissioner. But he may or may not need an additional. Things, okay? I, I personally don't see a downside. To withdrawing and refiling because he's going to have to repost anyway. How do you feel, Mr. Bell?
Oh, Madam Chair, just for clarification, withdrawing and with filing, refiling, are we referring to the variances? Because we, yeah, okay.
Because we can't act on a variance unless we have a site plan.
Understood. And I, and I think so from where I'm coming from, and I, I will do whatever the board would like to do, Madam Chair.
I'm not trying to tell you what to do, okay? We can't do that.
Understood, understood.
If you choose, if you choose to do so, we could vote tonight, okay? Vote it up or down tonight.
My thought is that, in, in, my thought process was. If the variances, if the petition stayed in place for now, you wouldn't be acting on it. Until you have the site plan. And that was kind of what I was thinking. If there is a concern of the board. That the variances are still active. You know, without a site plan in place, even though that there's no action in the month of November or December. If there's a concern that they're still in place without a site plan, then I would have to. Request that we withdraw those variances without prejudice.
Your variance refers to the plan that was submitted. With your request for a cannabis facility. This is no longer going to be a cannabis facility. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct. If I could, I believe you're correct, Madam Chair. If I, if you wouldn't mind my just taking a quick peek at the actual wording of the variance petition. I believe it may say exactly as you've noted. Let me take a quick peek if I could. I'll just actually look at the public notice and see how it was presented. As well. So it doesn't look, yes. So in looking at the. The legal ad, it does state that the applicant intends to develop the property as a cannabis cultivation facility, and this is. The petition for variance. I will take a look now at the application package. Which states. Yep, in the, in the letter, it states the. The use as being a cultivation facility in the application itself. I am not seeing anything specific to the cannabis cultivation facility itself.
In what?
In the actual application form.
For what?
For the petition for the variance.
Right, but if you remember, we told you we couldn't deal with the variance until we had a site plan.
Understood.
What, so what is on the site plan hearing notice? It says cannabis facility, does it not?
That it does, and that's what I just indicated, correct.
You see. You're asking us. To go ahead with a variance. On something that doesn't exist. We don't even have a plan at this point. We don't know if you'll modify the building. We don't know if you have a group of tenants.
Given the. This portion of the discussion then, because it makes reference to the cannabis cultivation facility. Which, again, they've, they've requested a withdrawal without prejudice. And with that said, I would ask that we could respectfully withdraw the two petitions for variance at this time. Because.
So you want to withdraw all petitions without prejudice, is that correct?
That's correct.
And let me just inform you that if it is the board's will to do that. Then what we will need to do at any point in time, you, you have, you can see where your. Deadlines would be in order to file for a hearing date, correct? Deadlines would be in order to file for a hearing date, correct? And then you would. Know, if you file in December. You would have to file for all three together. In order to be on the January agenda. But if you don't get ready until January or so, you could be on the February agenda. You just have to meet the deadlines that are in that list of deadlines. Out on the website. That that's on the townofberlin.com. Zoning dash or, yeah, zoning dash board dash appeals. So is it your request of the board? That they make a motion to withdraw all three petitions, site plan, variance. Thank you, special permit. Is, and and that is that your request as an agent or the petitioner, correct?
Correct.
Would someone care to make a motion?
I will make a motion that. We allowed the withdrawal of the special permit site plan and variance requests. Anything dealing with Kane Industrial Trust at Ten Bigelow Road. Without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Danny. Is there any further discussion? Does anyone have any questions? Now, all I will say to you, Mr. Bellak. Is please, if you go to file for a variance for parking, please do not do it without a site plan. And if you're gonna file a site plan. If you take a look at the packing requirements, we need to know what the building is gonna be used for. And it would require you to come back. Again, if you were to change. The tenant. You understand that?
I do, I do.
Hearing nothing further on the part of my colleagues. We have a motion in a second to withdraw all three. Special permit, variance, and site plan for Ten Bigelow Road. I'll do a roll call. Jim? Jenny?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Keith, you're abstaining, are you? And I'm an aye. So you have the four votes that you need. I think that's the wise decision. Lee Ann will have some papers that Kathy will need to sign for the formal withdrawal, okay? I mean, we have this on tape. We have your request on tape. But council wants us to have it in writing.
Understood and agreed.
Okay. It will make your welcome next time you come back more pleasant.
Thank you very much. I enjoy seeing you folks.
And again, please speak to the building commissioner. And please contact the planning board, they're expecting you. I'm sorry, go ahead with what you were gonna say.
I just wanted again, thank you, folks. And I understand, you know, your role and with the with the town and. And I do understand that you're not fighting us, you're assisting. You're you're providing us guidance and much appreciated. We we agree, we understand where you're coming from. And with that, I would ask that all of you have a happy Thanksgiving. Madam Chair, get over what you get going on there, the frog in the.
I hope it's before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I'll tell you, there is something nasty going around, and it's not pleasant. So hopefully. It's not the beginning of that. Starts with a sore throat, and it it'll knock you for a loop for a couple of weeks, so.
Yeah, I've been testing myself for COVID on a regular, well, for the last couple of days that I've kind of had this. It's not COVID.
Nope, and that that puppy's not going away. That keeps coming back in various forms. So I think it's something we have to live with. For our remaining days. So again, folks, thank you very much. Have a great night. Stay warm and enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Thank you for your tolerance.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye bye.
Do we need a motion and a vote to close the hearing?
Yes.
Go ahead, Danny.
I move that we close the hearing for. Ten Bigelow Road.
I'll second that.
Was that you, Jim?
Yep.
Yes. There's a motion in a second. I'll go around for a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Who's on here? Is there anyone else on here besides us, Lee Ann?
Yes, we have Chris Keith, select board member, Louise Gianda, Conservation Commission member, and Mr. Peter Hoffman.
Okay, do any of them wish to speak to us?
Louise just put her hand up. So I'm allowing Louise to talk.
Thank you.
Louise, oh, there she goes. Go ahead, Louise.
Okay, well, I was just, they came to us on October nineteenth with a request for an NOI hearing. Would the changes that are being made affect that NOI that they would have to file and, well, they would have a new site plan?
I I don't think we know that, Louise. I think it's a case of. What they come back with.
Right.
If they want auxiliary packing on the other side of the wetlands. I don't know how they would get there.
Right, that would change things, I think. We weren't able to make a decision on the NOI because they did not have their DEP number. So it was continued until. Meeting when they would have the DEP number.
Do you know when that's gonna be?
Well, we don't.
You continue to hearing to a date unknown? Okay.
Continue depending, continued pending on the issuing of the DEP number.
Okay. I think that you're gonna have to ask them when they come before you.
Right.
Because I don't know what, you know, I have visions of them coming back with a slightly smaller building. I don't know who they're gonna have as a tenant. And, you know, I I just don't know how that's gonna affect. What they need to do with you folks.
Right.
What are you asking them to do in the NOI?
We were asking them. To hire a monitor, right? What we talked about was, well, they reviewed the plans for the. Stormwater and wastewater. Systems. We talked about this snow storage. In the parking area and everything. Using native plants. When they do any kind of landscaping or whatever. But if they were to put a parking lot on the other side of the. Wetlands, that would require all kinds of plants. Delineation of the wetlands water and everything. So I think it would make a difference.
Okay. Well, good luck, because now you don't even have a building, you know?
Right, exactly. Okay.
Did anyone else want to speak?
Chris Keith left the meeting. Mr. Hoffman does not have his hand up.
Okay. All right, we're all done with minutes and everything else, Jim. Are we all set?
Yeah, yes, we took care of everything else.
Excellent. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Did you get that?
I did.
Okay. I'll do a roll call, Keith.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so we are adjourned.